Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 27, 2024 Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I could ask everyone to take a moment to please silence their cellphones. Please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any member of the audience who plans on recording any portion of this evening's agenda, other than our reporter from the Enterprise who we know is here, you would just come forward to the podium and identify yourself, or if at some point during the meeting you intend to, please just be recognized by the chair and let everyone know that you are recording. I'd like to start for a moment, just introduce members of the board, starting at the audience's far left and moving to the right, is Frank Duffy, he's a full-voting member, Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member, my name is James Morse, I'm currently a full-voting member and serving as Chair, Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member, and our clerk, Scott Peterson, who is our vice-chair and a full-voting member, and Tony Fedruci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley D'Amello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in the public and to allow for a full and fair discussion of a project prior to closing a hearing. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only to the project and can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or to ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time, or if comments become repetitive. Any member of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue a hearing to a future date and time, otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been received, the hearing will be closed. Once a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. A supermajority vote of four members is necessary for the approval of special permits and variances. Any zoning board of appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law Chapter 40A or 40B. First up on tonight's agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Next up on the agenda is continuations. We have three this evening. We have received requests for withdrawal or continuances in all three of our continuations. So first will be 09223 Kim, 0 Stower Street, lot 202 and T-Ticket, an appeal to the building commissioner's determination. We have received a request to withdraw the appeal. So I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal. Is there a second? Second, Scott. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the appeal is withdrawn. Next, we have 01524, Remain 45 Toby Lane, East Falmouth. This is a request for special permit to construct a loft addition porch and dormers, and to allow it attached garage and have a little space, plus a plunge pool. We have a request that the hearing be continued to August the 8th. I will make a motion that the hearing be continued to August 8th. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mark, he was louder. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's continued to August the 8th. We do not require a... Did we do that one?
Yeah.
That one will require an extension to be signed by the applicant. Oh, see, this is previously signed by the applicant. So I'll sign that for the file. Final continuation on tonight's agenda, 03224, Parent 39 Mars Pond Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing deck, construct an addition at its place, and construct the front porch. We have a request to continue to August 1st. We do not need any extension paperwork, because we are still within the statutory time period to open the hearing. So I'll make a motion to continue to August 1st. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Duffy, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing is continued to August 1st, 2024. Next up, we have new hearings. First on tonight's agenda is 04724, Sun Cape Cod RV LLC, 130 Thomas B. Landers Road, East Falmouth, requesting a modification of special permit number 09806 to allow RV winter storage on designated RV sites.
We have Sun Cape Cod RV LLC, 27777 Franklin Road, Suite 200, Southfield, Michigan, I guess?
Yes.
Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a modification for a special permit number 098-06 pursuant to Sections 240-51F and 240102A, the code of Falmouth, to allow RV winter storage on designated RV sites. The subject property is 130 Thomas B. Landers Road in East Falmouth?
Yes.
And from Town Boards, we have Water. Sent us an email. It's pretty long. He's talked to the... They do not use... I guess I can read it. Thank you for your... Summarize it. They're not going to be using any antifreeze. They blow out their water lines with an air compressor, so everything's done without any harm to the environment. That's what I got out of it. Planning has no comment. We have Building. 130 Thomas B. Land is previously known as 110 and 176 Tommy Landers Road. 130 Tommy Landers Road consists of 34 acres. It's a separate lot. 0 Thomas Landers Road is 14.8 acres. Please see attached GIS. Special permit request 4108 denied. This similar request, this property was in Zone 2, WRPOD and CPOD, a highly sensitive area, plan submitted herein from 2008. And let's see who else we have. That's Building. Engineering has nothing. Board of Health has no issue. And Concom has no issue. And that's what we have.
Any letters?
No letters.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Waksmundski. I reside at 185 Cotuit Road in Sandwich. I'm the district manager of the three Sun Retreats properties located in Cape Cod, Sandwich, Dennisport, and here in Falmouth. I have sent you a letter. I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to peruse it. I could read it if you like.
We've...
It's in the files.
If it's in the file, we read it.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
In brief, essentially, as we can... The market of the RV business has dramatically changed since 2008. In review of the permit, we found that our business model would require some adjustments to it to allow for better seasonal camper experiences. Generally speaking, seasonal campers, being those who stay for the entire season, tend to need a place to keep their RV over the winter months when we are closed. That would be just leaving them on the site where they're already connected. This is, by and large, much less impactful environmentally, much more efficient for the traffic flows. We find that it's better for local businesses, because seasonal campers tend to go there more frequently. But as it stands, we have designated sites that are approved for RV usage during the season. They're simply not approved per the 2008 winter permit for the unit to remain on it in the off-season. All that we're asking is the unit be permitted to remain on it during the off-season when the facilities are shut off, rather than have units going in and out, disconnecting, things of that nature. That is the essence of the letter and the request.
Questions from the board? Frank, start with you.
Thank you, sir. Presently, you have a special permit to allow 45 sites to be used for winter storage.
Yes.
So those 45, plus the remaining, how many further ones do you look for?
200. We have 200 sites which are currently, per the permit, approved for an RV to sit on top of them and be connected to sites. We simply want them all to be approved also to remain there for the winter.
Now, you also have, in a previous special permit, I believe it's Condition 29 and Permit 129 of the year 2000, that some winter visits are allowed in December, January, and February, members only, seven-day max stay. Is that going to be remain in place and enforced, and how are you going to do it?
No. So to recap briefly for the board, the property used to be privately owned. It was purchased by Sun Communities in late 2019. The previous ownership had a membership program, which is not something that is a part of our operational model. The park is entirely closed in the winter months. We do not have membership. We shut off all of the facilities in the park. I have a person who lives in the park through the off-season to keep an eye on things. We have a full-time assistant manager who handles phone reservations. But much of what you see in those previous permits are aligned to the previous ownership, which is why we needed to update the permit.
So then you would not object to, if we were to include, if we were to vote on your application positively, to removing the condition from the previously that allowed winter visits?
I have no objection to removing that.
Right. Thank you.
Mark?
First off, we're kind of sticklers around here about facts, figures, details, staking. I mean, this particular board has been fairly strident in our staking policy, and we kind of like all the facts going in, and it seems in your application. How many acres is this site?
Ooh, you have me there as far as the exact acreage of the site.
Yes, I do, don't I?
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight point eight. But you said 54 on your application.
Wherever that we took that number from, we took it from existing deeds. If we got that wrong, I apologize.
Well, your existing deeds don't jive with our internal...
Does that...
We got you at 48, and I mean, you got 30... Sorry, I only have this on my phone, and I'm not going to squint, because I got a bunch of stuff in my eye today. But I mean, that part of the application is incorrect. And I'm actually quite familiar with this property for two reasons. A longtime employee of mine lived on the other side of the pond, and I used to go in his backyard and look across. And I always thought about the septic or whatever. But then I knew people that lived in there, and there was a lot of problems with people... Well, when you got a recreational vehicle, especially ones that's motorized, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the monthly fee there than to junk the thing, because nobody wants them, because 50% of the construction is wood, as you're quite well aware. And you start leaving these things for extended periods of time, they leak. It's a sensitive area that you're in, and I used to observe that from my friend's backyard. I mean, he worked for me for a dozen years, and I spent a lot of time there with his dog swimming in the pond, and I was always... You know, I... The, you know, gravity sends or whatever you got there in the pond. And that's a septic issue, but this permit was denied before for obvious reasons. And 46 trailers there over the winter, especially old ones. I know of people that have junked vehicles out of there, because they've been sitting around and hanging around. And when something doesn't run, gaskets dry out, and as soon as you start them up, they leak. And secondary to that, people tend to maintain them in place, and, you know, you start changing oil in something with a 460 V8 and a 9 quart sump, it's just bad. This permit was denied before, and there's absolutely no way I could ever vote for this. I think we're trying to take care of our environment here. I mean, we're eliminating junk yards, and, I mean, I don't mean to insult, but you know yourself, if you... These things get left, nobody wants them. It was denied before, it's just a bad idea. I have no objection to you guys building more log cabins or anything in there, but I think parking these vehicles there for extended periods of time to leak into that sensitive area is just a horrible idea.
Well, if I may, I appreciate what you're saying. But we're a seasonal operation, and we do site inspections every spring. We have a very professional and capable staff. My district maintenance manager is the retired fire chief from Whitman. They know what they're doing. They ensure that we hold people to the standards that they need to be held to. I think that what you find by comparison, because what we do with the septic on a seasonal site, when a unit is going to be hooked up to remain there, is we hardline it in, you know, and we can inspect that, and we can make sure that it's sealed, and that is something that we can easily do. You're not talking about a lot of sites. The entire park can be inspected in, you know, a long day or two days, and issues dealt with as necessary. There's tremendously high demand in the Cape. There's a finite amount of space for this type of business. You have an increasing number of retirees who perhaps winter down south or somewhere else who are looking to summer on the Cape. You have an increasing volume of families in the Boston area, other side of the bridge, who are looking to summer on Cape. So that demand influences rates. It influences our leverage to hold people accountable for the quality of their site, which we do, because I have a line of people waiting for that site, should you not be able to maintain those standards. And I don't know that that is the same as it was, or what the rationale was the previous time that the permit was requested. The units themselves have also changed a lot. What the seasonal camper is looking for is not the same vehicle that the short-term-stay, traveling-the-country camper is looking for. It's not a Class A, where you have the vision of the guy behind the wheel and the camper that's attached to it. It's destination models, which are put in place, brand-new, lots of side-outs, bedroom in the front, bedroom in the back, appliances that would house-size appliances, brand-new, warranty issues, you know, coming out of these nice lots. The competitive market of building park-model homes, destination-model homes, which in and of themselves are fundamentally RVs, but they're really designed for long-term living. It's very different than how campers were designed, when you had to put as much thought into how is this going to move down the road. These don't move down the road. They move down the road when they get placed, and they'll move down the road if they get placed somewhere else, but they're not transient vehicles. And so the care for them is different than it would be for something of that nature. So we do have standards that we maintain. We're able to maintain those standards because of the demand for this model of living in Cape Cod. Housing market, very expensive here, right? A lot of people only looking to be here in the summertime months. A variety of types of people fall into those categories, who are reflected in our guests. Many people who work in construction on the Cape are looking for seasonal housing in the Cape. Traveling nurses, I have several in the park right now, who come to the Cape seasonally to work. This housing situation appeals to them, and with that coupled with the snowbirds, if you will, with that paired with the families looking for extra space for their children, we have demand that allows us to... That impacts rates, that also gives us the leverage to ensure that we are able to maintain the necessary environmental standards. We have a very professional staff to do that as well. Now, with regards to the environmental impact, when you're talking about the opposite type of the campground operation, the historical type of that campground operation, primarily what we refer to as transient, short-term, you're talking about people coming in, driving in, a vehicle as much designed to drive as it is to be lived in temporarily, hooked up in a temporary manner, disconnected three days later, driving away. Over the course of a 180-day season, how many times does that happen? 60 times per site? Connected, disconnected, connected, disconnected, in a temporary manner with the plastic hoses versus the PVC hardline. And so that is why I would argue that the current model is more environmentally impactful than the model that we are moving toward, the Sun Retreats model of primarily seasonal guests, where it's all set up. So I think those factors make it a slightly different request than it was whenever it was requested previously. And I think that we do a fine job of maintaining that, because as I said, if someone is unable to stay to those standards, the place isn't going to turn to a junkyard, because I can have them removed, and I can put someone else in that place, and we have the market to do so, to maintain that.
Again, I'm not comfortable with it. There is a serious shortage of any available housing. We have a hard time enforcing what we have. I think that that place is designed for seasonal, and I think it should stay as it is. I mean, you keep also bringing into it profit. Profit isn't our motivation here. To ensure that these things are moved is important for the environment. Again, I mean, how many leaks into that pond of oils and such is it going to take? With 200 spaces up from 46, I think it's just... Well, it's a no-go in my book, completely.
But just to clarify, do you understand, I'm talking about a smaller volume of RVs actually passing through the park than are currently passing through the park? A minutely smaller volume of RVs. If there's 200 sites, you're talking about 200 RVs a year coming in, hooking up, being connected. We inspect the connections. We inspect the connections monthly, no problem. And maintaining that, as opposed to potentially, you know, an average of three-night reservations over the course of a six-month, you're talking about 1,000 RVs coming into the park, connecting, disconnecting, needing to be... You know, that volume of inspection becomes much more of a challenge.
Your current permit, though, doesn't prohibit you from going to that business model, allowing people to come in for the entire summer season?
It does not.
Okay. The concern, I think that Mr. Fineran may have, and it's kind of resonating in my mind too, is that you're permitted now for 40 or so vehicles there. The concern is that now you just have 200 vehicles that are never going to move.
Well, again, I mean, we can be held accountable for that.
As opposed to right now, where the majority of them do have to move, because...
Yes.
...but you permit that 160-plus have to move out.
Yes, that is correct. And what I'm saying, though, is that being the case, that means that you're going to restrict it to the smaller, more mobile type of a camper. No one's going to put a destination model, or even necessarily anything of that size, on a site if they're going to have to find storage for it, because when you factor in the people in the market who do not have a place to store it in the off-season, it makes the investment impractical. Do you see what I mean? So if you live in the winter in Florida, and you live in Cape Cod in the summertime, and you have to move that unit somewhere in the wintertime, you don't have any way to move it, and so you cannot do that. And the idea was to simply leave it on the site. We can be held accountable for inspections.
Finding a boat if you don't have a mooring or a slip, though.
It is, but I mean, we have the solution. I mean, it's there. It's already there. It's not a question in my mind. I understand the concern, but it's not neglected. We don't...
I haven't said it was.
Right. I mean, we are there, and we are present to uphold people to the standards. If we can be trusted to hold people to the standards, as we have, I mean, this park's been here a very long time.
What's the current demand right now for people who want a year-round spot?
So we have three parks on the Cape. The other two parks, Peters Pond is 95% seasonal, so there's 400 sites there, and there are 375 sites that are seasonal. I could easily, if I had more, I would fill them. Wouldn't be a problem, there's a waiting list. Same in Dennisport, there's 150 RV sites, they are all full. There's no emptiness for the seasonal sites.
Winter storage, I mean.
Right. In both of those parks, winter storage is permitted, so none of the units go out. And so what I was asking was to apply the same business model here that we're currently practicing in Dennisport and in Sandwich.
Aye. Do you have another question?
I've just... The proximity to that pond, I knew the Newman family who owned it before. I know the problems they had with abandoned campers, because it was easy... Especially somebody had an old diesel pusher that just didn't move anymore. It was easier and cheaper for them just to pay, to leave it there while it leached into the ground. I've been through that. I used to hide, my employees used to work there. I'm just familiar with that. I'm entirely uncomfortable with this, as they were previously. And, you know, that's all I have for now. I mean, I just can't see myself voting for this. You know, you purchased the property knowing what the deal was for, and I don't think it should change.
I respect what you're saying. I do believe that the models, the market is different than it was. Traditional camping in that sense is not what it is anymore. The quality of the things has changed. I'm not aware of any environmental infractions regarding that as being a historical factor that, in which the park was fined, or there were instances of that occurring. I'm not aware of any.
How are we to know? I mean, I'm aware of numerous vehicles that were in there. People are like, "Oh, you can buy that for 150 bucks," or, you know, I mean, it just... I'm not comfortable with this. They weren't comfortable with it previously. You know, caveat emptor, and the proximity to that pond, and the dirt of housing in this town, and you said you got traveling nurses. I mean, it just... We, as I said, we have a problem with enforcement. We can't inspect what we have. If something was puking oil all over the ground and was removed, there's almost no way that we would ever know until it hit the pond. And I think that the current method and licensing that you have just kind of ensures that the environment... And that's in a sensitive area. I don't believe...
It is. All three of our parks are in very... I mean, what isn't a sensitive area? Let's be honest. Everything is, right? And again, we're talking about less disconnection.
So I'm going to go out and see if there's a board question, then we can come back to this with discussion. Do you have questions, Suzanne?
When did you take over this park?
2019.
2019. How many abandoned vehicles have you had?
One. I called the guy, and he came and picked it up. I think it was a miscommunication. I personally began managing this park last July, which is why the delay in the request for the permit changed. I don't know that it was completely comprehended, you know, compared to what our thoughts were about where the demand is with the seasonal parks and how that might be affected. And so I wanted to do things the right way, and, you know, come before you and talk about it, and things of that nature, because as you said, you know, we have to hold ourselves accountable, because you can't necessarily inspect everything all of the time. But the brand does, Sun does. I mean, we do. We hold them accountable.
The fact that these 160 or whatever-plus aren't going to be driving around on our streets is wonderful for me. I think that's half of the environmental part of it. I think it's great.
I think anyone...
And are traveling and roaming the roads.
Anyone who's familiar with Thomas B. Landers, which is the road in front of us, knows how it used to be. It used to be completely blocked on both sides by short-term-stay guests, waiting for their turn to go up the hill and check in. This eliminates that entirely.
No, I think this can be... I have no problem with this myself.
Scott?
Maybe you could increase that five-and-a-half mile-an-hour speed limit? I was trying to back into that.
I mean, safety's a pretty big priority in the parks. I appreciate that.
Of the 200 sites, again, this is a sensitive area, of the 200 sites, how many of those have asphalt underneath them?
All of them.
100% of them?
100% of them. We do not have RV sites that do not have a concrete pad underneath them, asphalt pad.
How does the septic system... You have a Title V septic system. Is that being pumped out once a month during the season? How does that work out?
It varies. Beginning of the season, at the end of the season, we do it. We also do it through the season. Now, the shoulder months, as we call them, prior to Memorial Day and after Labor Day, there's really low impact in the park. Another thing that we found with the seasonal guests is that they generally are there in the weekends only, with school and whatnot being a factor, until you get into the summertime. So you really end up talking about the 100 days of summer versus the entire six-month season, Memorial Day to Labor Day, when you're primarily busy. And then we do it month to month.
Okay. So we don't want to have an issue with that.
We use Pure Flow is the contractor that we use for that.
Okay. Has there been any inspections from the town at the RV facility in the last few years that you're aware of?
Yes, regarding propane. I met, oh my gosh, his name escapes me now. He's worked primarily with my district maintenance manager, your fire chief, but regarding propane storage, that's the only one that... storage, that's the only one that I'm aware of. And of course, we do get inspected every year prior to opening. The conversations are inspected by the Board of Health. The pools are inspected by the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. Referencing your letter, you mentioned construction workers, traveling nurses and others who've come to the Cape. Due to the fact that those primary demographics, the previous two, that you cited retirees who are down south and families off Cape, to me, okay, they have RVs and they want to do this, but when you're saying you kind of have this, almost like a workforce, who owns those RVs?
They do.
So these people that are going to come to work in the construction business or visiting nurses have their own RVs?
No, they tend to have larger units, but yes, they do. They have RVs. They do it season after season, not just as one-offs. One of the traveling nurses, Leslie, that's there this year, she was also there last year, Falmouth Hospital invited her back. Construction workers, now, we're not talking about construction workers from far out of town. They're mostly construction workers who operate in the Boston area, but do their work on Cape or specifically on the islands in the summer. In the Falmouth Park in particular, they tend to be there for the proximity of the woods hole or other things like that. But yes, they buy it as an investment to park it, to leave it there and then to work out of it. Their families come down, their families stay in it, they go to work early in the morning, they come back in the evening, they're there on the weekends barbecuing, and that's where their families are running around. So I see the kids every day. I see them sparingly. And it creates a better quality of life than if they were commuting from across the bridge, which is horrendous during the summer season.
So Sun Retreats doesn't own any of those RV?
Correct. The only things that we own are short-term rental cabins, which we rent out for short-term stay guests.
But those are the cabins, they're not the RVs?
Those are also RVs, just to clarify. There are no cabins. Everything is an RV. It's just a different RV type. They're on wheels, they're blocked, they're leveled, but they're essentially with a tongue, they could be hauled out of there behind a truck rather than on a trailer. Everything is an RV.
Okay. How many do you own on the site, then?
On that site, we own 40.
You own 40. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony?
I'd like to ask just a few questions regarding the existing special permit 9806. Let me just start with condition number 10. On May 23, 2007, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions. I couldn't find that. Are you aware of those order of conditions?
No, I probably have them in the file somewhere, but again, that was 12 years before we took ownership of the property.
Let me ask the clerk something. The Conservation Commission didn't respond to this?
No. They replied that they didn't have any comments.
All right. So there apparently is a May 23, 2007 order of conditions of which you may or may not be aware of the requirements of that order of conditions, and we're in a very sensitive area, as pointed out by Mr. Finnern in the Coastal Pond Overlay District. But yet, you may or may not be aware of what those order of conditions require you to do or not do, because sometimes that's what order of conditions do. So moving on to condition number 13 of 9806. It requires you, or the, not you, but the applicant, to submit monthly reports to the ZBA showing daily records of site rentals, number of individuals, number of vehicles, number of tents and RV tents on site. Do you do that? Are you following condition number 13?
It's possible that that's done through the home office. I would have to check with you as to how they're received. I do not personally do that.
Okay, so I don't know if it's being done. The answer is I'm not sure it's being done. Condition, I only have a couple of them. Condition number 14 requires that there be no implication of music, you know, partying and all of that. Have there been any noise complaints?
Not since I took over that property.
So you're not aware of that. Condition number 23 requires the ZBA, and ostensibly I imagine that's through our zoning compliance administrator at the Building Department, it says, "The ZBA shall conduct two site visits per year as required, one after opening and one after closing." Have those ever been done? You stated earlier that that, you had someone check propane, I think maybe the Board of Health, but it doesn't sound like you had the zoning enforcement agency there.
I had, who would have been an example of a representative from them?
Somebody from the Building Commissioner's office, let's say.
He has been to the park. He came, the Building Commissioner came to the park last August. I met him there and then I came and met him here, actually, and that's when he handed me the special permit and that was the beginning of this whole story.
I would only suggest that when a special permit exists with conditions, that is the property owner's responsibility to make sure these things happen. And that two visits are requested, not, in other words, the town has a million things to do, the Building Commissioner's office or anyone in this town. And also with regard to supplying the monthly reports, the zoning administrator has tremendous amount of work on a daily basis. That becomes your responsibility to do so, to put those reports in. And I would only ask that if you're really asking to expand the use in this, very, very, I mean, I don't even understand how special permit was issued back in the day, given the concerns for this area in the Coastal Pond Overlay District, but it was and I wasn't part of that. But it's your responsibility to do all of these things.
Sure.
It may sound, I don't know, it may sound, you might not have done it, but then you might not have known about it either. I'll give you that out. So I think before this board gives you additional use of the land in a very sensitive area, that has to be sure that you're following the conditions that exist today.
Sure.
And I'm not sure that's happening. One last question I'll have for you. Under 240 10.23, sections A and B, and also 240 12.1E, I have to ask you the question under those requirements for this. Why is this not a substantially more detrimental use of the land of the property?
Sure. This is the opposite of a more detrimental use of the land of the property because it will have less in-and-out traffic on those sites. There will be less of the connecting of septic and water, less of the disconnecting septic and water, exponentially less of that. It will be connections that we can supervise because they're done at the beginning of the season, that we can inspect throughout the season, that we can hold people directly accountable for because it's not such in-and-out traffic. The park will still, there will be no expansion of the operation of the park. The park will still operate seasonally within its restrictions and then it will close and then we will winterize it and turn off all of the facilities until the next spring, at which point in time we can assist and supervise and ensure that the connections are all correct on all of the units so that we can roll right into it. From an environmental perspective, from my perspective, this is a significantly more environmentally friendly and safeguarded operational model than had existed because of that. And I agree with you as far as we can certainly be more, we can easily be more proactive in reaching out to make sure that the necessary inspections are happening. As I said, I did meet the Building Commissioner on the property, went around a little bit. We also went back to his office and met there and talked about the park. So we have been in touch and communicated to Board of Health as well. But certainly, if it's necessary for us to be more on top of making sure those inspections are done, we're happy to do so. I am a year-round employee. My assistant manager's a year-round employee. My maintenance lead, who would be the supervisor of the connections and the grounds, making sure that we meet those environmental requirements, is also a year-round professional employee. So there's absolutely no restriction where we're restricted time-wise as to our availability to be there, to help with the tours and whatnot.
Well, just, I'll just say one last thing because time is running short too here. Order of conditions are not something to be trifled with, particularly in a sensitive area. You might want to have home office give those to you for your office so that you understand what is required as order of conditions.
I'll definitely follow up on that because I have seen some orders of conditions that were about more limited projects. So I'm not exactly sure what that was, such as plantings and things of that nature. So I'd have to see exactly what that order of conditions pertained to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment? Come up here, please. Just identify yourself.
My name is Brendan O'Hara. I live at 21 Candlepine Circle and considered on a butter because we're on the pond as well. I've been here since 1993 and the campground was pre-existing at that point. We've had problems with the campground through all these years. The previous owner was less than scrupulous with a lot of activities that went on there and often when he came before this board, it was to fix things that were done without permission and without, you know, coming before the board, you know, basically doing it afterwards. I don't know this organization. I'm sure, you know, I had no issues with them or problems to this point, but I'm very concerned about the orders of conditions that have been issued in the past. We don't have an enforcement mandate for the town that, to go in and check these things to make sure that they've been done or are still being maintained. And that's a real problem on a site that is as sensitive as this. The other issue I have is, is that this campground was set up specifically as a campground and that it was not going to be occupied year-round and it was for people to come in. Back in the day, it was more tense than it was campers and slowly over time, the industry has changed and they're going more to RVs coming in. But this move, just like the move giving 45 sites to stay on, is now going, it's no longer a campground, it's housing. They're building houses in there. They're selling sites to people to come in and live there. It's not a campsite where people drive in and stay for a couple of days and leave and go on the Cape. This is now housing. The reason why they want to have all of these sites is because you can take the, can I hand this out? And this is from their website. You don't have to move your camper. You can plant it. I only have four, I'm sorry.
Quick and sharp.
And it's, so now it's becoming, and this was the year of the original time when this campground was set up, it's becoming a trailer park. And the reason why the campers were forced to leave every winter was because they didn't want it to become a trailer park. These are not RVs. Somehow this got squeezed into the law that as long as there's wheels on it at one time and some method of pulling it, they can call them RVs, but they're camp, they're buildings and they're there and they're permanent buildings. And what they want to do is make the entire place permanent buildings. Now, I think that's fine. Actually, I don't think it's fine, but I think it should be, that's what they should be applying for, is that they want to put 200 home sites in there on 45 acres. They're not campsites. They're homes. And this would never be allowed with the zoning. It's a, it was, the campsite was a special permit because it is agriculture zoned, if I'm pretty sure. So this has been like a, in construction, we call it scope creep, where the job starts off as a bathroom and then it becomes the living room and the bathroom and then it becomes an addition. Well, in this case, it's trailer park creep. They are going from a campground to a trailer park. And that was specifically the reason why they were not allowed to keep campers on the site. And it never should have been allowed for the first 45. Again, it was sort of snuck in with an excuse of, oh, it was, you know, we were just, we would move them to another space on the site and park them there and then move them back to campsites. Yes. And they've never been moved. They sit on the sites because it's not camping, it's housing. So I believe that if you're going to do that, it's disingenuous to say that this is a campground, it's now housing. And those things that you see there, those are not RVs. Maybe legally under the law, they could be considered RVs, but those are not RVs. Those are campgrounds and they're selling them, which as far as I know, I don't think that's part of the permit, that they're allowed to sell property and that's what we're heading towards. So I have a real problem with this for all the things Mr. Finnern said and from Mr. Petrucci. When they made, when the sale went through, we had so many issues with the previous owner. I came to town and I talked and I said, hey, someone needs to go in there and do an inspection just so that for the new owner, you know what we're starting with, what's there to begin with. And they said, well, we don't have any means to do that. Someone has to make a complaint before we can go in to the property. Well, that's great, but I make the complaints, but in order to make a complaint, I have to trespass and go on the property and find the violations of the orders of a condition and the things, then come make a complaint. In essence, when I make that complaint, I'm admitting to trespassing. So the situation is just kind of bizarre. We put all these orders of the conditions on a property, but no one ever checks them. No one, there's no method to enforce them. And again, I'm not seeing you guys are violating anything, but they don't even know they have orders of conditions. And I'm not surprised because there's no method, when a property changes hands, that that information gets to the new owner. So I am against this. I think it is, it's disingenuous to say that this is a campground. We would never allow this density of housing in that situation and on that site. And we've got septic issues. They never should have allowed them to put in.
Wrap it up, please, sir. I've been very generous with the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Sir?
George Hazeey, I went in Turner Road. I'm in the butter. I've been there since 1975. I had stayed in that campground in 1974 when Paul Soza owned it and it was transferred to the new owners. I've been troubles with the special permit ever since that time. I support the opposition to this permit change for a lot of the reasons that have already been stated. I think that, I want to, I think reiterate what one comment was, that if the desire is to establish 200 residences that are insulated, heated, sewered, then there should be an application for a housing subdivision to go in there, if that's really where we're headed with this. It's a fine campground. I've had friends stay there. It looks, it looks nice in there. It's a little expensive, but it's really a very nice place. But I think operating as a campground is where this ought to stay. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
I guess I would just say for the board that for any order of conditions that Conservation issues, they do have enforcement authority. So I think if, I don't have a copy of what they may have issued years ago and it may be that it was a temporary type of circumstance for something that needed to be done, their current comment was that they didn't have a comment. So my presumption from that would be that we advised them what the applicant was asking for and they didn't raise any issues. Just saying. You also have an approval from the Board of Health and no concern from the water super. So I guess, you know, I just want to raise those issues because I guess the other part too is, you know, if the board did deny back in 2008, that was somewhat 15 years ago and a different owner. So it's just something to consider as well.
The other thing, I'll just caution the board not to, should not be considering previous complaints or violations in tonight's decision-making. Board discussion?
There was people alluding that they're living there year-round. And according to testimony, only two humans are there year-round.
Living on property is just my maintenance lead. I also do not live on property, though I work there year-round.
So there's no one there after October 1 or November 1?
After October 31, really. The entire park is winterized and all of the water is shut off except for the office and the building that the maintenance lead lives in. But we walk the park all the time to ensure there's no, for example, damage from trees, from storms, things like that. There's no one living in the park in the winter.
Because the butter fell to someone there living there all year long.
There is not. There is only someone living in the designated house where someone can do that.
And then when do you reopen? What's the date?
We open in late April.
Thank you.
Board discussion?
I just want to, what was the date you said you closed?
Well, we, the park closes up October 15, but everyone has to be out by the end of October, winterizing and whatnot.
Yeah, the old conditions say November 1.
And all seasonal campers shall...
And all seasonal campers shall leave the subject property no later than November 15.
Yes. But they're out of there before November.
It's permanent as a campground. Creep, if you ask me.
Hey, I got the same thing going over my way in the Airstreams.
Frank?
Well, my initial, when I initially read this application and looked at all of the previous decisions of this board, and then I considered what I know about the zoning bylaw, it occurred to me, this property as it's proposed doesn't really fit anywhere in the zoning bylaw. There have been some comments about this is really a residential subdivision and in one sense, it has all the similarities to a residential subdivision if it goes forward this way. You can tell by reading the conditions that previous boards put on these special permits that they were just thinking off the top of their head. They were just going crazy coming up with conditions. And for example, one of them, it's been, that was referred to here before about the monthly reports. What are they for? But my view of this is, I don't think we really have any clear authority to grant the application that's before us. The zoning bylaw, I think, really doesn't give us any guidance as to how to approve this application, what conditions are appropriate. I'm not even sure the zoning bylaw even considered such a thing when it was drafted. So that's my view.
And piggyback on that, it's mentioned several times in the conditions that it's a campground and everything should leave. I just see this as creep. I mean, Frank may very well be correct, we don't have the ability or the authority, but I mean, they knew what they bought when they bought it. And there's absolutely no, my experience is, there's absolutely no problem getting people to fill those spaces as it is. People call all the, I know people that call all the time and cannot find a spot there. I also, as I said, I've had employees that work there and I know in the past that people have lived there year-round. I'm not saying that that happens now, but I don't think we have the ability to police And I, I can't vote for this. And I spoke to a few, no, I have just, I can't vote for this. What you bought is what you bought.
I understand that and you're right.
Board discussion, sir, excuse me.
Excuse me. I mean, we could withdraw without prejudice and do, dig deep, I guess.
Or come back next year and show us that you've been complying with the previous conditions. I think this is absolutely premature for lots of reasons, especially Frank's. I think that you're absolutely correct that to withdraw and potentially come back next year, once you can show us that you're toeing some sort of a line. But I mean, I know a lot of things that happened in there and I'm just, and granted, they were under the previous owner, actually owners, but I'm still not convinced about, comfortable.
I do feel bad with doing this because he is not, hasn't done anything that we know of at all. But you pay the price when you buy something, but if we did withdraw without prejudice, that gives him at least some wiggle room.
Absolutely.
You should have the order of conditions. There is an order of conditions from '07 from Conservation. You should have that.
No, I can find it. I just didn't anticipate that question. I apologize for not anticipating it, but I'm sure I have it.
So I think it gives you more time if we do the withdrawal without prejudice, to do your homework and to get your orders of conditions and, you know what I mean? Yep.
And they came with the purchase. They're attached to the property.
Give him time to do some homework.
I don't disagree with that.
From an ownership perspective, I drove through it. I thought that everything was well-kept up. I, I mean, litter, signage, you know, the individual sites. I thought whatever you're doing seems to be, you're doing the right thing, but from just a process perspective, the order of conditions that Tony pointed out, obviously a legal aspect that Frank pointed out, I think that withdrawing would probably be the best path forward for you to kind of corral all these issues and then come back to us with some new thought process.
Tony, you're not voting, but you have some data?
I agree with everybody on this board. I'm hoping that this board votes to allow this applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
The only thing I'll add is that, looking at the previous decisions, clearly they wanted recreational vehicles and/or camping. And what has been submitted by a butter tonight, I don't consider recreational vehicle, that is mobile home and not a, it's a more permit. But I also share Frank's sentiment concerning, I don't know if we have the authority to do what's being asked. So at this point, I would agree with the withdrawal without prejudice is probably a clean and easy way to dispense with this.
I, this is just hearsay, but I was told that the, I don't know if it's true or correct, but I mean, we don't have enough facts here, but it was also supposedly in a timeshare, which brings it a whole nother step further down that road, which, I don't know. At this point, I think withdrawal is just the best avenue.
So I'm not going to offer advice, but I think that the board would be looking at a denial if this would be voted on tonight. Would you like to make a withdrawal request, sir?
It sounds like advice to me, but I know it's not. I'll withdraw.
We have a request to withdraw without prejudice. Is that, or I should say, would you like to make a motion? Motion to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The application is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Next up, we have 04824, Lacava, Zero Bet's Way, Lot 4, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a portion of the proposed single-family dwelling to be located within the floodplain overlay district.
Okay, we have Michael Lacava, Manager, Repurpose Properties LLC, 55 Main Street, Buzzits Bay. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 247.3C to the Code of Falmouth to allow a portion of the proposed single-family dwelling to be located within the floodplain overlay district. The subject property is Zero Bet's Way, Lot 4, in Falmouth. And let's see what we have from the town. From building, we have no comment. Water. A water main will need to be installed by the developer. Please schedule a meeting with Matt Lanin at falmouth.gov if the ZBA does approve. Planning has no comment. Board of Health. The Board of Health has reviewed the septic system designs for all of Bet's Way and have approved them with alternative technologies for nitro reduction. And then we have engineering. Engineering says this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Bet's Way is a private right-of-way, not yet constructed in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, dry wells are shown on the plan for the roof as we typically recommend. This lot has been assigned in, this lot has not been assigned an address yet. The address that will be assigned, once a building permit is issued, is Two Bet's Way. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Quotations upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per compliance, unquote. Six, where this project falls under the jurisdictions of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and construction, erosion controls. That was engineering. And then we have a conservation approval. Do we have an order of conditions updated? That's in here. Let's see what else we have.
Looks like it.
Yeah. Looks like it's a big one. Many pages. All right. Many pages. All right, sorry about that, getting there. Well, at least they did one. Wow, okay, that's all I have.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. See you, Neil. That's it. Sorry.
My name is Steve Bjorkland.
That's why I just skipped over. I do apologize.
For the record, my name is Steve Bjorkland. I'm representing Mike Lacava in this. I promise not to take as long as the last hearing. This one's really, it's kind of simple and it's belt and suspenders for us. I do a considerable amount of zoning and in reading your zoning bylaw, you have one particular section, which is 247.3, large B, small A, which states, in new residential structures, there shall be no new basement area upon, or upon making a substantial improvement, no new basement shall be installed. This site was staked out completely. I hope everybody had a chance to go out there and nobody got bitten by ticks like me. We actually strung out the foundation, so you could tell exactly where the house was going without having to read the numbers on the stakes. So I hope everybody appreciated that. This starts out as a, a single-family dwelling on this site, which was 187 Central Street, which had an old septic system with no nitrogen removal or anything. That home is being removed to make way for this four-lot subdivision, so that septic system is gone. As Suzanne had stated, we've gone through the Board of Health and all of our systems have nitrogen removal to the highest degree that's available for single-family dwellings now. The letter that I read, that I got from Conservation today states that they did go through the order of conditions and they have been issued now. This was done back, I think, at the end of April. On June 5, we actually received all the orders of conditions for all four of these sites, even though the only reason we're here tonight is what is known as Lot 4. I don't know if there's a plan that can go up on the screen or not on this, but you all have copies of that, I believe. There's a small portion on the back, if you're looking from the street or from the cul-de-sac, the back left-hand corner of the basement, you can see a little shaded area. And without zoning board relief, what would happen is we would have to make that a crawl space in that area or fill in that, that triangle in the basement, which is probably 12 feet by 12 feet on an angle. And with the relief, what we're doing is we're actually bringing the basement slab up to elevation 13, I think, .1, which gets us above the flood elevation. And we would file, once that's done, we would file a LoMA with FEMA to be able to actually get the entire structure outside of the floodplain. And that's basically it in a nutshell. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board, start with you, Tony.
With regard to the order of conditions that was issued, I've not seen them. I know they exist because of there. Section 247.3C requires this board, in this particular area, to seek recommendations from the Conservation Commission. Are there any recommendations in the order of conditions? Let me ask you, this is your order of conditions.
Conservation Commission held this hearing under notice of intent for the reference project, which was closed May 15. An order of conditions was voted upon, but has not yet been issued. They don't have any comment as far as what we're doing. They approved the stormwater plan. The one thing I didn't mention, each of these sites actually has infiltrator trenches or infiltrator pits for stormwater runoff, which was not required, but we offered it up on all of the houses that are going in here. So as far as runoff is concerned, they looked at that and that's not an issue. They gave an order of conditions for the plan.
So they're perfectly fine with that shaded corner being in that area?
Yes.
Just, I don't want to give too much time, but why can't you just move the structure forward and out of the area altogether? I don't understand.
There's other constraints that are on the site. And I apologize, when they first started this subdivision, it was 17 years ago, so I didn't, I wasn't involved in the design of the subdivision. We kind of picked this up after a long period of time and tried to finish this up with reasonable foundations. And it might sound kind of strange, but you could grant this permit. We may come back and modify this permit later, because as the road is built out here, these are probably going to be multimillion-dollar homes. And I'm going to assume that if a customer comes in and decides that they want to change the plan some, they're going to get the house that they want. But what we tried to do was show reasonable foundations out here that somebody might want to construct. And it just happens that we hit that one corner and on the original subdivision plan, they, in my opinion, strictly my opinion, they had not done enough on-the-ground shots for that elevation 12 that was there. So I had my engineers go back out and reshoot that corner of the house to make sure that we were going to be accurate with on-the-ground survey. And it actually brought it up about eight feet higher up the land area, not in elevation, but in, in horizontal move. So originally, when we were designing this, it missed the corner of the basement. And now it's in the corner of the basement. So again, it's a belt and suspenders thing for us. I thought it was a reasonably simple permit to, to request to do that. And the building commissioner, Gary, had just said, come in here and...
So last, my last question is, so this is just a footprint for demonstration purposes only? You don't intend to really pull a building permit based on this?
We want to be able to pull a building permit on this foundation, but there, there is a chance that somebody, if they come in with a different foundation, might not need to do that. So again, it's a belt and suspenders thing for us. If this goes through, it's fine. I mean, if you went out and saw the site, you could never tell where the floodplain is out there. We're not, we're nowhere near the coastal bank. We're not near any wetlands. It's not in a Zone 2 Aquifer District, but we treated this with the most sensitivity that we possibly could and still wanted to end up with a reasonable foundation on the house. That's, that is on here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First to Noreen. Noreen, have we done this before recently? I've never, never.
Not in the time I've been here.
Okay. 247.3C, no alteration of land form. And then you're saying, okay, it's small. How do you guarantee you can mitigate the runoff with the infiltration basin? Can you mitigate it 100%?
Yeah, it's all sand out there, so there's no real runoff issue. We just, we offered up, because of the roof, the roofs that are going to end up going in there, the impervious area that's out there, we just offered up, I think each site has two of these infiltrators out there. And the subdivision itself has a rather large infiltration basin. If you saw the overall plan for the subdivision, which I have rolled up if you're interested in it, but there is a basin that's designed to handle all the storm events for the subdivision itself. So again, this is over, it's overboard. I mean, we have more than what we need for infiltration and stuff that's out there.
So you have the 100-year storm.
Yeah. And that's all been approved by the planning board as well.
Yeah, my struggles again is with Concom. I guess that I would have, I didn't see the results in the, it's the application online either, so.
I can make one more comment if I can about that. When we originally filed with Conservation, they indicated that we needed to have order of conditions on two of these sites and they thought the other two would be RDAs or Request for Determination of Applicability, which is a much less standard. This was one of the ones that could have been an RDA and we decided to file all of them under notice of intent, because that way you can regulate through orders of conditions every one of the sites that's in this subdivision. So again, we went overboard to regulate these houses, so it's not going to be an environmental issue.
Right, just, I always like to see Concom's conditions prior to coming to us for our kind of final, but very good.
And I have the order of conditions for all, all the sites.
I have no, I have no issues with this. I'm glad you use a nitrogen. I think it's good. Good project.
What is the approximate square footage of that little lower right-hand corner that's in the floodplain?
Oh, God, you're going to get me. I didn't have them figure out the exact square footage of it.
You give an approximation? I'm not trying to hold you to anything.
It's, let's say it's 12 by 12 or 15 by 15. We didn't dimension it, we just took it right up to the 12-foot elevation.
Well, it's 244 square feet divided by half. What's that, 122 square feet?
Please make it approximate if you can.
I don't know. I mean, I could try and study it and figure out exactly what it is, but I think the impact is basically the same, if it's 12 or if it's 15 feet in either direction.
Mark?
As much sand is out there and with the extra infiltrators, which, good for you, and the D-Nite system, absolutely no problem with us.
Thank you.
Frank?
I have no questions.
Public comment?
Excuse me, sir. Joseph Johnson, I'm in a butter. We have no problem with our cousin. You get family, you get private property owners and you've got a history. And the only problem we saw as butters, my family, is that the original plan, some of the plans that were proposed, had proposed to make a runoff from...
the plans that were proposed, had proposed to make a cult of runoff from our cousin, first cousin's property and his development onto his cousin's, the Johnson property. And since then, I think they've rectified that, but it was, it was approved through waivers, but through your own engineering department, they said the, the figures were not right and that they had to re-submit the figures. And it went into administrative and they kind of left it up to the family to, to have input and make sure that we protected each other's property rights. I have one question. I don't, and it is, I, I saw, I'm hoping to get one of his plans. I have one on the phone, but forget like you, I'm not going to get that up. It won't be useful. But the point being that if his handling of the, of the water runoff somehow is a miscalculation or if there was something, an act of God or something from their, from their property, we get the runoff onto our property, what recourse do we have if that should happen? We don't want to agree to these things and then later on they say, "Well, you know, it's already gone through." We want to know, is there a recourse?
The board's not going to get legal on this. It has to recourse, legal recourse if there's runoff. That's not our job.
No, but that's what it is. That's an answer. That's an answer. That they should not be, if he said it's not going to be any, then we're going to assume that their calculations are right. If they make a miscalculation, then what happens? It's on us to pursue a legal remedy if that's, if that's hap-
Civil.
Thank you very much. I would like the coffee. I saw you had some coffees that I don't, I was hoping you'd put it up here.
No runoff.
Other public comment? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, board discussion?
Could I respond real quickly with the comment that you made? Originally, the subdivision was designed with all infiltration out there for the subdivision itself. That was redone into an open pond, so that's what happened to the planning board level. And that was done through Cape and Islands Engineering, which was prior to us getting involved. So that was the change and it was, they changed the design of the drainage for the subdivision itself. But again, Cape and Islands did it. It was reviewed by engineering here. And, and after that, we ended up adding these other infiltration basins for each of the dwellings that's up there. So it's about the best that we can do, I think, and I, I don't predict that there's going to be any problem. Thank you.
Outside of the 100-year storm, right?
500-year storm, how's that?
CONCOM hasn't really addressed stormwater in here. I haven't read every thing of it.
As I was saying, I always defer their expertise. They're the ones who, you know, either engineering or CONCOM, especially if CONCOM has jurisdiction, I defer to their expertise. It's always going to be more significant than town engineering, as we ask.
If I can, what happens when you design one of these and you go through stormwater permits? If there's water going to a site now, the regulation says we can't increase the runoff to that site. So it's not saying that we're going to not have any water at all, but we can't make it worse than what it was. And by adding all these new measures, we're hoping we're going to make it less than what was going there in that direction now. That's the objective.
Other board discussions? How would the board like to proceed?
Close.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Senator, it's a second. Any discussion on the motion? To the not least in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. So, how would the board like to proceed?
I guess they convinced me, so I have a motion to approve with conditions.
Second. Findings?
Findings? Let's see what I have here. It's agricultural. It's in the overlay district, Bon Pond. Flood zone DA E12. Lot size is 57,586. It's on a private road. Right now, well, it's going to be 9.3 with structure and all, I, I guess. It's hard to judge this with nothing. It's the floodplain overlay district. That's about all I have for findings.
All right, I've got a few others.
Go for it.
So there is approximately 122 square feet that is in a floodplain. The granting of a special permit will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, or conflict in the existing bylaws. The relief grant is the minimum necessary considering the flood hazard. And is this in an area of critical environmental concern? I don't believe it was.
No, I don't think so either.
So C is not applicable. Applicant's testimony included that there are other issues.
Oh, it's in the NHESP, partial.
Is that an area of critical environmental concern?
No.
No, okay. Applicant's testimony was that there are other significant improvements to the lot, including D-Nite system. CONCOM did or, has issued an order of conditions, which is in the file. Any additional findings?
Conditions, water, super?
Oh, yeah, you can incorporate any, yeah, so findings, or town, town referrals, CONCOM's order of conditions.
So well beyond the minimum 50 feet from the coastal bank?
Yes.
So that's not an issue?
The, the address was given?
Address needs to be updated pursuant to 247.3(c), the Board of Appeals, after granting a special permit, shall notify the applicant in writing that the issuance of a special permit to construct a structure below the base floodplain level may result in A, increased premiums rates for flood insurance, and B, increased risks to life and property.
That's all I, I think that's it.
Anything else? Any other conditions?
Anything else, Noreen? Anything, anybody? I think we're good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approval. Thank you, sir.
I would just say, please keep an open mind if somebody does change this and I come back in again with something. We'll make sure it's just as good, if not better. How's that?
You be nice with the Butters now, too.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have 04924 Copeland, 82 Cary Lane, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a pool and spa in the front yard to be located more than 50 feet from the property line.
All right, we have Hans and Elizabeth Copeland, 18 Goodfellow Road, Hanover, New Hampshire, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 24014A-I, I mean, 1I of the code of Falmouth to allow a pool and a spa in the front yard to be located more than 50 feet from the front property line. The subject property is 82 Cary Lane in Falmouth. Planning, this is scheduled to be heard by the historical commission on, on May 7th. Building has nothing, assessors have nothing, water has nothing, border health has no issues, and I have engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Cary Lane is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights away. Four, a drywell is proposed, proposed for the pool and spa for compliance with section 2036. Five, with the proposed construction location, erosion shouldn't be an issue for abutting properties. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, construction of this project shall follow the town soil, erosion and sediment controls standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Work Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who will be the permitting authority for this project. CONCOM has no comment. Fire department, no comment. And that's, wait, wait, something here, historical. Oh, historical does have findings. As they're meeting on May 7th, the findings, the pool will be installed in the front yard. Pool will have an automatic cover, there will be no fencing. Three, a bluestone patio will be installed around the pool that will not be visible from any public way. Four, path lighting will be installed that also will not be visible from public way. Conditions, the proposed work and associated materials must match the documentation submitted by the applicant. All drawings and plans shall be submitted. And they, they, I adhere with a certificate of appropriateness. And that's what I have. No letters in here. Oh, a letter. Oh, we do have a letter. Dear Mr. Morse and Appeal Board members, Cynthia M. Crofts Wish, I hope I said that correct, sorry, and Jeffrey Wish, trustees of Cynthia M. Crofts Wish, 2008 revocable trust, clients of Amenclower, own the residence at 86 Cary Lane, Falmouth. Their property abuts 82 Cary Lane, where Mr. and Mrs. Copeland propose to install a swimming pool in the front yard of their new house if the Board of Appeal grants their request for special permit. Doctor and Mrs. Wish have discussed with Mrs. Copeland some concerns about how the proposed swimming pool may impact their property. Doctor and Mrs. Wish appreciate that the Copelands have considered those concerns. The plan of Cape and Islands Engineering dated November 23/22, as revised on 3/27/24, shows a, quotations, "proposed six," unquote, "high hedge 18 feet long to be located off the southwest corner of the Copeland house. This hedge will help screen the pool area from the Wish house. The Copelands have also agreed to use dark-skies compliant outdoor lighting to light the proposed front yard pool and surrounding patio area. Doctor and Mrs. Wish respectfully request that the board's decision include the following conditions. Number one, to help screen the pool area from the house at 86 Cary, the applicant shall install a hedge at least six foot high and 18 feet in length off the southwest corner of the applicant's house, as shown on site and septic plan revised 3/27/24. This hedge shall be maintained in a healthful, healthful condition and replaced in kind as necessary to be effective screen. Number two, to manage glare and light trespass, and light trespass that may be adversely affecting abutting properties, all lighting for the pool and surrounding patio area shall be dark, dark-skies compliant under the standards for the International Dark Sky Association or any comparable requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code. With these conditions included, to the board's decisions, Doctor and Mrs. Wish are able to support this project. Very truly yours, Bob Amen."
Good evening.
How's it going? I'm Corey Everly with Environmental Pools. So the proposal is to put the pool in the front yard, mostly due to the septic would be, is currently where the rear of the house would be and coming into the lot, the garage and front door on that southwest side facing the Butters. So in talking with them, we're going to be putting up that hedge as well as the pool is in ground, so it won't be visible from the street or anything like that.
Have you been in touch with your, your clients? They're okay with the proposed conditions that the Butters, the concerns the Butters?
Correct, yeah. They, they went direct with them and then it's kind of make sure that we put that on the landscape plan.
Makes our job a little easier. Anything else you'd like to add?
That's about it.
Board of, any questions? Frank?
No.
Mark?
Zero.
Nothing. Scott?
Pool is 21 by 10?
Yep.
Just odd that it's not a round number, but that's, that's fine.
Yeah, plunge pool type of deal, so.
Okay. No, as long as we're going to match up to the Butters and the Butters are happy and you're fine doing that, seems to be a good fit, quite honestly. Thank you.
Tony?
Surprisingly, I have no questions.
Public, public comment? Counsel?
Hi, Bob Amen. Thank you for reading the letter that I submitted earlier this month to the board. I really don't have anything to add, but the Butters did ask me at attendance hearing to emphasize their concern that these conditions be included in the decision. The six-foot-high hedge is actually shown on the plan, but it's important that it be maintained in perpetuity or as long as the swimming pool is there. And in correspondence to, between the neighbors, Mrs. Copeland both agreed to the downlighting, hooded, and also to the hedge, saying that privacy was important to them as well. So the neighbors, the Dr. Wish and his wife, do support this application conditionally, and that is that the board include the conditions that have been suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Almond. Any other public comment? All right, how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, we're closed, no more testimony to be taken. So I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. So findings.
Findings.
Lot coverage is 95,905 square feet. The request is to, for the relief requested in the application to put a pool in the front yard. Testimony was that, and the current lot layout is the need is because the septic is currently found in the rear. The lot is ample in size from what is requested. Existing lot coverage by structures, house, garage, and decks is 3,628 square feet or 3.8%. Close lot coverage by structure, house, garage, and pools, three point, going to 4.1. Parking and paving is 4.6, so it's by right. There was one letter of concern and from under Butter and the attorney, Attorney Almond appeared at the hearing testimony, the request for the findings concerning dark-skies light compliant as well as the six-foot hedge appearing on the landscape plan will be maintained in perpetuity. Testimony from the applicant that they would be willing to do that. No other opposition at the hearing and no other opposition in the file. Any additional findings?
Private road.
Private road.
Partial twissett overlay.
Thank you.
RA district.
Not in a flood zone.
And we got a, a letter from his-
Oh, thank you. Historical has issued-
Appropriate in his letter.
...decision and certificate of appropriateness as well as conditions, which we can add to ours.
Yeah, that's great.
So conditions per plans, standard hours of work, historical, any town referrals, dark-skies compliant lighting for the requests, and we can put in Mr. Almet's request regarding, excuse me, his proposed condition, word for word, where the-
Yeah, we can just do those two conditions.
Perpetuity of the hedge. Any additional conditions?
Nope. Just per plan, like, per town departments.
Right. Any else, sir? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, people. Finally, this evening, we have 05524, 17 Walker Street LLC, 17 Walker Street, Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to demolish the existing building and replace with a three-story building with 11 apartments, of which four will be affordable.
Okay, we have application 05-2417 Walker Street LLC, 907 Massachusetts Avenue, Cambridge, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit pursuant to chapter 40B to demolish the existing building and replace with three, with a three-storing bill, three-story building with 11 apartments, of which four will be affordable. The subject property is 17 Walker Street in Falmouth. For letters, we had two, no objections, one objection. Wait, no. Hold on. I'll get those.
That's always, that's always changing.
Okay, two letters, no objection, one objection.
One.
One.
One and one.
One and one. Okay, sorry. All right, let's see what I have from departments here. It is deep. All right, let's see. From Scott, DPW, DPW Engineering recommends this project be sent out for peer review. We, we will provide a general review of the project prior to the meeting. Note that there will not be any stormwater permit required for this project. The assessor's office. You'll need to have final sign-offs, I think that's what they were getting at. Oh, these are, these are strange paperwork I have not seen, so I apologize for struggling here. This is Board of Health. In accordance with Master 040B, a hearing is held. Attach, find a copy. It just says that health, these, I don't know what these are.
If I just had to go up for a second. Counsel, I believe you've seen all town referrals so far. Counsel, I believe you've seen all town referrals so far. Are you prepared to address anything that's in the file? Just to speed this along a little bit.
Tell me why they're like this.
There should be a poster on top that just summarizes all the way to the top.
On here?
Yeah.
Okay. Why are they all so completely different? Nope. Okay, whatever. All right, Historical Commission has reviewed something. They have comments. Do you want me to read all of those?
Summarize is fine.
Oh, it's long.
There's a poster on the top in yellow that you can just go down.
Planning Board has, we've received from Planning Board, fire, Board of Health, engineering, wastewater, affordable housing, assessing, and historical.
Tonight will just be, this is just going to be an overview, so we can, as people can read the referrals, we can get in the middle of it. Counsel could press anything that lasts, or the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I am Laura Moynahan, Falmouth, from Falmouth, an attorney, and I represent the applicant, which is an LLC, principal of which is Mr. Stuart Rothman, who is here tonight in the front row, and his wife Lisa. And Mike Barcelli is here, who is our project engineer. And the architect is a Boston architect who did not make the trip down tonight. Is available for questions, obviously. So, this is, oh, I've lost my liquor, but I'll see if I can arrow. All right, so this is an 11-unit apartment building at 17 Walker Street. The applicant is proposing five one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, and two studio units. No age restrictions. It would be workforce housing. The affordable restricted units are four, three at up to 80% AMI, a studio, a one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom, and one at 100% AMI. The total square footage is shown, 13,557. So, the residential square footage, 8,412. I think that's kind of important because it is a small lot, and you look at the pictures of the buildings, but when you put it in perspective, you're really dealing with a building that has a footprint of about 4,500 square feet and about 8,400 square feet of floor area. So, building height is 35 feet, total 15 bedrooms. It is on the sewer, so there is an increase in sewer flow on the project. The developer has standing under 40B as a limited dividend organization. There is ownership, and HLC, I'll call them, which is our new acronym for the former DHCD, has approved the project eligibility. So, the existing conditions, it is downtown, obviously. It's an existing commercial property that's to be redeveloped. It is 100% covered by pavement, parking, and structures. There is sewer. It is Zone Business One. There is existing water and other utilities. It's in a pedestrian-friendly location, and public transportation is available off Main Street. The proposal is to demolish the existing commercial building, construct a new three-story building with that footprint I discussed. Development cost is estimated at about $6 million. Parking is designed on the lower level of the building, which is somewhat unique for Falmouth, at one space per unit. The apartments on the second and third floor, as I said, would be connected to the sewer. There would be an elevator. Each unit would have a washer and dryer. It is an existing degraded site that will be redeveloped. It is obviously a suitable location for apartments and affordable housing generally. It's where all our local planning says we want them. The density I submit is appropriate. It would be considered infill development within a high-density mixed-use area. The Affordable Housing Committee and the Select Board have both given their support for the project, and the project eligibility was issued by the state. The 2024 Housing Production Plan calls for 400 affordable housing units in five years. This is the recommended target, even if the town does reach its 10% of state-mandated housing stock on the SHI, recognizing that there is an additional need over and above the 10%. Currently, the town is at 8.1 and 300 units short of the 10% state mandate. So, this GIS map gives you the project location, and here is 17 Walker. This property here at 193 Main Street is actually owned by the applicant in a different entity capacity. It's a commercial building, as is this building at 8 Chancery Lane. And I should also mention that Mr. and Mrs. Rothman do have a home in Falmouth. They're very much involved in the community as owners of these commercial buildings and landlords. And this project really came about because I think Mr. and Mrs. Rothman recognized the need for workforce housing. We tried to design this project such that the units were small, and even the market rate units would remain somewhat available and attainable to, to the workforce. So, this is a picture of the existing building here on Walker Street. I expect that you're all familiar with it. It's so close to Town Hall. This is of another, I believe, three-story building in this location here. All of this is exterior parking that's available now on the site. This is Chancery Lane, where there would be access to the new building as well as Glenwood Avenue. The existing building was built about 1935. As I mentioned, the lot coverage, there is no existing drainage or stormwater facilities on the site. Topography is relatively flat. We are not in a flood zone. We're not in a Water Resource Protection or Coastal Pond Overlay District. The access, as I mentioned, is from Glenwood and Chancery Lane. It is located in a Falmouth Historic District, so the zoning board would be the permitting authority under what normally would, might be a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. It is located in a mixed-use residential-commercial district, so-called Mr. Cod, which, by the way, does allow for one parking space per apartment unit under the zoning bylaw. So, I'm, the Planning Board might have forgotten that when they did their referral, but, but that is the case. As well as setbacks to a maximum of 20 feet. So, that is significant, the Mr. Cod designation. Neighborhood conditions, existing developed mixed-use neighborhood. So, it is infill development within walking distance of employment, recreation, schools, and services. And it is in close proximity to other large three-story buildings. This is an example here of the Belezza Spa Building on the corner. This, I'm not, I don't know if this is three stories, the Eight Cousins Building, but, but it's two stories, but certainly a large building, red brick building. This is a photo of the rear of the Belezza Building, and you can see the project site here off Walker Street, where the red car is located. These are just some other neighborhood conditions. So, this is a photograph of the municipal parking lot, which is across the site, and another view of that looking down Chancery Lane. What's noticeable here, if you didn't notice it, is the large green vegetated buffer that buffers this commercial area from the adjacent district. Existing conditions plan, you have in your file showing the exterior parking, the location of the building, the roadways. We also asked Mr. Barcelli to note the edge of the actual traveled ways on the existing condition plan, so you could see where the edge of the actual traveled way is, because there really isn't any definition there now. As far as the design guidelines for the building, this is one by the Cape Cod Commission, which was adopted by the Planning Board in 2019, encouraging placement of parking underneath a structure. Another design guideline adopted by the Planning Board is to line up buildings as close to the street as possible, focus on reducing the vast spaces between the roadway and buildings. New buildings should be sited near the roadway to reestablish the street edge and relate the building to the street. So, that's what has been done here with this design. That's also a state design standard. Through Housing and Livable Communities, under their guidelines, they encourage in downtown areas in particular for the street line to be established and continued rather than setting buildings back from it. And that's really to encourage the attractiveness of the village pattern and also pedestrian use, where you have a defined pedestrian corridor. This is the site plan. So, you, you do see that the building takes up a large area on, on the site. No question about that. The parking is shown here on Mr. Barcelli's plan. This location here at Walker Street is the entrance to the building for the residents. There's also another doorway entrance proposed here. And these are the, this is the outline of the parking garage entrance. It will not stick out. These lines are just here to show a distance. I asked him to put that on so you could see where the edge of the parking garage is flush with the building. So, it's not intended to be something that's sticking out. Same with on Glenwood Avenue. The drainage is proposed under the parking garage for, for the property, so it will be all, all-new stormwater design and management of the drainage that doesn't exist now. This are the floor, these are the floor plans, which are in your file, so showing the parking garage. This is the lower floor, one-bedroom unit here, and the blue is the common space, the elevator and the stairway. And this chart here gives you the breakdown of the units and the square footage. Second floor, the units in pink are the two-bedroom units. In this color, orange, are the one-bedroom, and then the yellow are the studio units. And the floor models are the same for the third floor as well. As I said, each unit would have its own washer and dryer, full kitchens, living areas. These are the elevations for the building. So, this long view here is the Chancery Lane elevation, and you'll see the parking garage here. It will be open, so the ventilation would not be an issue in the parking garage, so it would be a graded style of garage door. This is the Glenwood Avenue elevation. Same thing with the garage door. The building height is 35 feet. You do see a small protrusion here for the elevator shaft, and we did request a waiver for that elevator shaft, which is slightly above the 35 feet. This is the Walker Street elevation here. You can see the doorway. So, as you're walking south along Walker, you'll come in here into the doorway for the residents. And this is the elevation to the north, which is essentially adjacent to another building. So, there are no windows on this facade because it abuts right up against another commercial building. And here are the four views. These are in, in your file as well. So, again, this is the Chancery Lane elevation. Here's the corner of Walker and Chancery Lane, so the corner is rounded. And this is the doorway coming in off, off of Walker as you're walking south, coming in the doorway. This is the Glenwood Avenue here, also Chancery Lane. This is the side that's abutting the Business District Building. And that, I believe, is just another view of that. So, the apartment units, just looking at my time here. We have for the four units, gross square footage, 550 square feet for the studio. The market rate units are the same size. Maximum rent up to $1,522 per month. And we give you the unit number. Same with the one-bedroom, up to $1,631. The two-bedroom at 80% AMI, which is 906 square feet, up to 1,957. And then the 100% affordable studio unit, up to 1,904. I say "up to" because those are the maximum rents. Doesn't mean that that's what is going to be paid. It's just that's the maximum that can be charged. Development standards, obviously, and the Planning Board mentioned this in their referral, how the project does meet the policies of the local comprehensive plan, providing for the infill development, encouraging multiple housing opportunities, and for the town to accept responsibility for providing housing for people at all stages of life and income levels. And we do have also the Affordable Housing Board of, Select Board funding priorities. This, just to give you an idea of what the Select Board policies are, with the, encouraging the increased density that is compatible with the neighborhood, meeting criteria of the target population by providing for low-to-moderate-income households, providing rental housing, which is a priority, providing workforce housing at 80% and 100% AMI, and creates more deed-restricted units than required under MGL Chapter 40B. And as the Housing Coordinator noted in her referral, the size of these market rate units, I think, as I mentioned, is significant here because we're dealing with relatively small units. These are intended to be for our workforce, for our young people, for our single people, people that want to be living and working in Falmouth. Development standards, it supports the implementation of local and regional housing plans and design plans, meets the goals of the Cape Cod Commission and the Housing Production Plan. And the location and type of the housing, I would submit, checks all the boxes for housing to benefit Falmouth. It's downtown. It's where we want it. It's improving a degraded commercial site. It's an ideal location for somebody to live and be able to walk into town, walk to the parks, walk to the bus, et cetera. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. There is a lot, obviously, to this application. I've just tried to touch on the basics. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Board questions? Maybe we just stick to large macro things and not get into the nitty-gritty tonight. Start with you, Frank.
Well, okay. This is, I hope this isn't too nitty-gritty, but you did mention that the parking lot across the street behind Belezza was municipal parking. I don't think it is. So, I, I'd like you to identify the available municipal parking, which it might be necessary for any cars over 11, including whether or not there are any restrictions on overnight parking on these lots.
Well, when I, just to clarify, Mr. Duffy, when I said municipal parking, I meant it is, I believe, restricted for Town Hall use, not public use. So-
We need the details when you-
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. It's not available for the public, is my understanding. That, that is-
No, no. I was-
Okay.
I think you identified the parking lot behind Belezza as municipal parking. That's, that was the picture on, on the screen.
Okay.
Are you talking about the, where the park, where the municipal vehicles park?
Yes. That's what I meant.
Okay. Well, that wasn't clear to me.
I'm sorry about that. But yes, that's what I meant, as municipal parking that was designated for Town Hall.
But in any event, in some further future development, future hearing, I would like to hear about all the available municipal parking within 300 feet, and any limits on the use of those lots.
Okay.
I have a couple of other questions, but I think they're, they are too nitty-gritty, so we'll put them off later.
Mark?
I don't have any real questions. 900-plus square feet for a two-bedroom apartment, I wouldn't consider that small. I think it's, I might call it modest, but I mean, it's- And 36% plus affordable? I mean, it's not necessary. I mean, I have to commend you for that. I, hey, if you're gonna do this downtown, I mean, I think this is, I'd vote for it.
Thank you.
So, I agree. Thank you for putting something in that's really more in keeping what our Housing Production Plan has been asking, that's one- and two-bedroom and studio units. We see a lot of these coming through where there's just a couple, one or two bedroom, or two bedroom, and then everything else wants to be three or even four bedrooms. So this is uh very much in keeping what I think is needed. Um, thank you for putting in greater than twenty-five percent for what's, uh, what's proposed. I do have a question, counsel, about, uh, I know that clearly the rental, the deed restricted forty-B units, the affordable units will be year round, half the year round rentals. What is gonna be the plan with the market rate units? Is, or would you be agreeable to a condition to ensure year-round rentals or? I'm not necessarily looking to necessarily all, but that's, the, the, the concern is always coming up.
Is short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals or VRBO or Airbnb. And it's a prime location for someone to wanna be downtown and not necessarily.
It certainly isn't the intent, intention. Do you wanna address that? Or, uh, Mr. Rothman, can I, you just have to say your name.
Okay. My name is, uh, Stu, my name is Stuart Rothman. Uh, and I reside, I have twenty-nine gunning, uh, Row Point Ave in Falmouth. So um just, I'd just like the board to know that since we've owned the eight cousins building, one eighty-nine main, and the board stiff building, which is one ninety-three main, we have converted uh both those um upstairs, second floor uh facilities into one-bedroom units. We have four, four one-bedroom units there. Uh, those were established probably, I'd say, within the last six or seven years. We have had consistent rentals there, they're all year-round rentals. They all really approach, and I can't promise this, but we have probably maintained between a hundred to a hundred and ten percent A, AMI on those units. Um, and our approach to the management of this facility will be the same. Uh, looking for long-term rentals. Uh, we're looking for, I, I have been, uh, with all transparency, I have been in the short-term rental business, uh, in Cambridge, Mass. I have no intention of going back into that business. It's a horribly labor-intensive business. And for the few weeks that you are able to rent in the downtown at super, superlative rates, it doesn't make up for the absolute hideousness of moving people in and out. So, you know, our intention is long-term rentals. We're looking at people uh that are working in restaurants and retail establishments in the downtown. I've been already people have lining up to get involved in, in renting these units. So I hope that alleviates that, that concern with regards to short.
It does. If I just could follow up one, I'll turn it over to the remaining members of the board. With a recent project, I think we put a restriction in about uh short-term rentals not being less than six, sixty days, correct? Is that something that would be agreeable to you or thirty, uh, thirty days? I mean, we're not concerned.
I would, I would, I would be minimal to a thirty-days situation. Um, you know, that's, that's not something that, I think that's in line.
It's a short-term rental, but that's not the, the concern is like nightly rentals, so.
And that's in line, thirty days is in line with other communities, what they've been doing with regards to restrictions. And I, I really wouldn't have a problem with that.
Thank you very much, sir.
We did sixty on that one.
We did, yeah.
Sixty.
I think he said thirty, right?
He did say thirty, yes, that's.
He did, but I was saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did sixty on the last one, sixty day. Um, you've read a historical letter?
Yes.
Of the looks of the building?
Yes.
And planning with the looks of the building?
Yes.
Is that being addressed?
Well, here's the thing, um, you know, the requirements of the, or the guidelines of the historic district, they're not regulations, they're not by lies, bylaws, they're guidelines.
Yep.
Obviously, they, they are the mint of the mint. It's what they want in highly visible historic buildings in historic districts. So this is, this would have to be an exception here to some of those requirements. Most significantly would be the wood, uh, because of the, of the cost. Mr. Rothman can talk a little bit more about that. But as far as uh meeting, you know, all of the historic district guidelines, I guess I can, I can respond more to that in writing because that just came in today, this afternoon. I really didn't get a chance to study it, but I know, I, I was anticipating it, put it that way. You know, so, but the issue really is, I think, for the zoning board, is weighing those guidelines against the need for affordable housing. And the location of this particular building, behind Main Street, on Walker Street, I showed you the pictures of, of, basically, you're looking like it's surrounded by parking lots. So yes, it's, it's a visible building, people are going to walk by it. But really, the issue, I think, for the board is, is it necessary to impose those strict standards or guidelines that the historic district imposes or wants to impose? And when you have to balance that against the need for this housing? And, and Mr. Rothman can talk about the difference in costs, but it, it's essentially the, the, as to the design, you know, putting balconies on apartment buildings is not practical for a number of reasons, which I think some of us have become aware of. There, there, there are liability issues, there are maintenance issues, there are repair issues. So in this type of apartment building, you know, you want a low-maintenance building that's gonna continue to look good for many, many years. You don't wanna have a situation where you have a building in a historic district where the wood is wearing, where there isn't, you know, funds to, to, to repair it. So there are all sorts of factors that go into that. But I've ju, but I will respond to that in writing, so you have a little bit more information to study. But that's my initial sort of issue. And then the last point on the design is that we're trying to put the parking on the lower level floor here. You know, we're not gonna be able to put apartments downtown unless we get unique with the parking situation. You know, we have other apartment buildings downtown, uh, seven oh-four Main Street, seven sixty-three Main Street. They have less than one parking space per unit. Granted, those are age-restricted apartments, but they still have a different parking ratio than one space or one point five or two spaces per unit. So we have to look at the downtown parking ratios overall and what fits. But the parking on the lower level is the way to be able to have apartment buildings downtown. What that does is it means that you cannot have, you know, extensive gabled roofs um that, because you're gonna go over thirty-five feet. So it's a question, you know, do you want the building to be higher than thirty-five feet? Or do you want it to stay at thirty-five feet? And we try to do the best we can with the design to keep the height down. That's the balance, you know? And so for the historic district and the planning board to say, well, and some of the planning board members did, did like it, you know, and, and there was a difference of opinion. But, but I would submit to you that that's what needs to be weighed here. Are, are, do we want the building to go higher so that we can get some of these features in that the historic district is at, is recommending? Or do we want the building to stay as it is, where we've made an effort to try and address the design to be in keeping with the neighborhood and keep the building height down? And I, I can tell you, I did beat up this architect. You know, Stu can tell you, you know, I, I said, we have to do, we have to get some design elements in here that fit within the neighborhood.
There's none, there's none.
Well, there's.
Could you pull up the elevation, please, uh, for Walker Street?
Did you read his design narrative in the application?
No, I, I just watched the planning board and, but it's terrible.
So they may not have read it either, but I, but I can pull up the elevation and I can read it to you. Cause I think it's important.
Sit home.
It's hard when you're looking at these, um, when you're looking at these as well. Is that the one or would you like to pull for?
Uh, Walker Street, so that's, I, I maybe go back one, was Walker Street first? No, sorry. There's Walker Street on top.
Walker Street, yeah, okay. So he says, and this is an attachment to your application.
Who, who wrote this?
Um, our architect. So it's a design narrative, it's attached um to the application. Um, I'll just summarize. The base of the building is clad with cementous siding over a twelve-inch cast stone water table. The upper two stories are clad with cementous, uh, shingles. In an effort to reduce the scale of the structure, a slope roof has been introduced at the parapet line. The Walker Street facade hosts the primary building entry at the northeast corner of the site. This facade is broken up by a protrusion, which is clad with PVC board and batten that runs from grade to the roofline of the structure. This protrusion breaks the roofline with a gable component. The Chancery Lane facade is flanked by PVC board and batten from the ground floor to the roofline on either side. The upper two stories are broken up by bands of cementous cladding that breaks the roofline with a gable component. The Glenwood Avenue facade is similar to the Chancery Lane facade with the upper stories segmented by cementous cladding that breaks the roofline with a gable. The secondary entry to the building is located on this facade at the northwest corner of the building. The elevation at the north side of the structure does not contain any openings. The middle portion of this elevation is clad with PVC board and batten. The left and right sides of this elevation are clad with cementous siding on the ground floor and cementous shingles on the upper two floors. In order to reduce the scale of the massing, vertical strips of cementous cladding, which break the roof, roofline, were introduced. So shingle, faux shingles, siding, some attempt with the gables, trying to break up the masses. Um, but, but that's, you know, he wrote that up to address the, these issues, which we anticipated would come up because it's, it, it, design is subjective, you know? Do you wanna talk about the cost of the materials?
I just think you have the Cousins Building there, which is gorgeous, and this is not gorgeous, so it's.
So th, this is, this is an interesting subject because I was on a uh Zoom call today just talking about development standards in Cambridge and the cost versus the ability to present housing. And there's a uh significant decrease in housing permits in Cambridge over the last two years. And so this building is a cementitious-cladded building. And so the advantage for that is not so much in the initial cost of the project. It's in maintaining and maintenance of the cladding in the future. Um, when you're using a hardy plank, uh, cladding, which, you know, for all intents and purposes, you'd have to go up and knock on it to see that it's not wood. Um, you can choose a pre-finished color and you never have to paint that building again. That reduction in the reserves for painting and cladding, you know, is a significant benefit to the ownership of this building. And, you know, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to come up with creative ways to produce housing in communities and bring it into the point where you have at least a, a threshold, a hurdle point on the return on, uh, on investment that is livable. And that's, you know, and it's not just about the actual construction cost. It, it deals with the ongoing maintenance cost of the building. So we have used cementitious products in, in almost every development that I have done in the last ten years with great acclaim and great success. And we can create detail with this product that honestly, you cannot see the difference between wood and this product. So I, I hope that addresses, you know, kind of why we're going in this direction and why I've been doing development with cementitious products over the last ten years.
And were those projects in historical districts?
Yes, one of the projects is going on right now is in Natick, Massachusetts, in the downtown historical district.
And they're letting you use plastic products?
They're letting us use cementitious products.
Is it a forty-B?
No, no, this is commercial development. But I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, again, I love the Cousins Building. I'm proud to own the Cousins Building.
It is a beautiful building.
It's a gorgeous building. And we did a lot of work to that building, uh, after we own it. And I, I hope, we're good stewards for that building. But we purchased that building as a pre-existing non-conforming building. So we didn't pay for the masonry on that building. It was there, you know? I think that if you're looking at brick-clad buildings today, wood-clad buildings, it's just, it's just very expensive. And it, like I say, it's not just about the cost upfront, it's about the maintenance in the future. And now you've got residences here. We're gonna try, and we have been successful in keeping rents low in the units that we have downtown. We wanna keep the market rents low as well. To do that, you have to bring down the cost of maintenance. And that is a significant um savings for us over multiple years. You know, with the, with the Cousins Building, we just had to wa, you know, do pointing work and watercoat the whole building, cause Cousins was getting water in. That won't be a problem in this building for years to come. And we keep our stuff for a long, long time. So thus the yin and yang of development versus historical preference.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have no issue. I, I think you've done a great job. It, it obviously, that, that area needs a, a huge face. My only concern is, is we have basically a three-story building that has really no historical architectural features in my mind. Your exterior use, I, I fully support what you're saying, I wanna go for. And you're doing a great job here for the, for the town. It's just tough to take that, the downtown's gonna change. And I guess this might be some of the rationale for the change. But to me, it's just, doesn't have any historical ambiance to it, that's for sure.
Do you have any suggestions of what you have in mind? I mean.
No, I, I, it's just, you know, tonight's a night for us to kind of all drink everything in and get everything else. But thank you for the question.
All right.
Tony.
I am grateful to finally see a project of this nature downtown that might, you know, help a microcosm of workforce. It's very nice, very good. I have tremendous, tremendous amount of professional familiarity with the types of products you're talking about and have no problem with that type of product, understand why. The issues that I do want you to think about, I wish the architect were here tonight, but we're not gonna get into the nitty gritty, is there is no proportional balance to this building. And I'm very afraid of, we're losing the texture and fabric and character of this community. And I wouldn't expect you to build the Cousins Building again, it's much too expensive to do. But I have familiar with this type of building and the proportions can be. I don't want this to look like Waltham someday, or Arlington, or Medford. And I grew up in Medford, so I guess I can say that. And um, I'm very grateful to be here in Falmouth, by the way. Uh, but I know there's something can be done on the proportional nature of this building. Um, and by no means am I degrading the architect's abilities or capacity. But in any event, I would really love to see that worked on so we can keep some of the character of this town. I know we're not gonna get into the nitty gritty of this thing, but one of the things I will bring up later on, and I know your engineer will be able to talk about this because he knows just about everything that goes on in this town, is the sewer capacity downtown, especially after the completion of Liberty Green and this new senior housing. Um, you're asking us to waive the ten percent increase, but I don't know what that means in relationship to everything going, else going on. I'm sure that your engineer has looked at that, so that'll come up. Um, your architect's not here, but the, the, the travel lane inside, that was brought up by town folks, departments will have to come up, not twenty to twenty-four feet, that's something that has to be discussed. The reduction in parking lanes because of building, that building can be, those garage doors can be changed, very likely can be changed so that they can accommodate the two or maybe three parking spaces that don't quite make the nine feet. Um, I, I will bring up later on my concerns about the parking, or now that I know you own one ninety-three. Um, I've been to the site many times, and there are cars that park along Glenwood and certainly on Chancery Lane. I wanna know what's gonna happen to those cars and who will be parking there. So I hope that that will be discussed and what you have to lay around. But those are my questions for tonight, not to get into the nitty gritty, but thank you for bringing a project that actually could work downtown. Just try and not take away the character, try, don't turn this into Waltham or Medford.
It's a beautiful place.
It's a beautiful place because I grew up in Medford.
If I may, just real, very quickly, Mr. Burselli did address the travel lane issue in his response letter. You may not have had a chance to see that, it just came in.
I did.
Okay, um, but we'll, he could probably address that further. Um, on the sewer, um, I did review this with Amy Lowell some months ago because whenever we start a project downtown, she's the first stop. You always wanna make sure before you get too far into it that you have sewer capacity um for what you're proposing. So she did confirm to me, and I, I had asked Ashley to follow up with her, and she did provide kind of a response, but not what I was looking for, for you. But I do have it in my notes, I can certainly file it for the record. Um, what she responded to me was that there was sewer capacity and that, um, for, to accommodate this increase and that there would be no transfer lift station requirement, is that the right terminology, at this location? So again, you know, we, we went through that with her at the very beginning to make sure that this was approvable, given the change of use because the zoning board will have to step into the shoes of the selectmen, uh, or board, select board, excuse me, to approve the increase in the sewer use, under the sewer bylaw because it's a more than ten percent increase for the change of use, so.
May I just respond to one thing, one thing?
Sure.
The, what I'll be asking for with regard to engineering on this is, I don't understand the definition of Mr. Burselli's term adequate or adequacy with regard to parking. And I'd like to know what standards create adequacy for this community with regard to parking spaces, parking distances, travel lanes, all of that. I know we don't have to get into it now.
Okay.
Uh, but that's where my, I don't know what adequacy means or adequate means. What's the standard by which it is adequate? And that is my not getting into nitty gritty tonight. And that is my not getting into nitty gritty tonight.
There you go. Fine job.
So this will be a continuance. Noreen, do we have a date in mind? And I know, and Councilman, we're just, we are absolutely slammed.
I understand.
We're going to be there for now, the summer.
We're five 40Bs right now.
I know, and...
And counting.
It's crazy.
I guess the, you know, I guess it depends on what, Noreen and I have talked about what this, what the board's pleasure is with respect to engineering peer review. If you're going to request that...
Oh, yeah.
Then that...
Engineering told us to request it.
Right. So in my experience, that probably is the end of August, somewhere like that, third week in August. By the time the engineers retained, they review it, they issue a report, we have a chance to respond to it. I mean, I would prefer to do it that way than having, keeping, coming back to the board with multiple letters and responses. Let's just get it all in one basket and...
I'm finally going away.
So that would be my thought. Maybe you were thinking October, I don't know.
I just don't want to be away the third week in August.
I was thinking late August.
Noreen, you're the keeper of the, you're the conscience of the schedule.
The queen of the calendar. I'm going to be away the third week of August myself.
Or end, end of August, I guess.
Yeah, I haven't even looked at the calendar.
So we could schedule for the 29th of August?
So you can get a peer on board, reviewed.
And that way we could have a peer in and hopefully...
That gives you enough time?
Hopefully.
This is not the most complicated or largest year project, so I would hope they could have that in mind.
So what day?
Do you hear it, 29?
Yes, the 29th is fine. Could we define the scope of what that review is going to be? Is it engineering review? That's what was requested.
Engineering, I don't, we don't need stormwater. There was a specific, not, said it was not needed in this project.
I'd like to see the architect here, too.
Yeah. It would be good to bring the architect.
The, yes, he was going to come tonight, and I was me, actually, because I didn't think we were going to get into this much detail tonight. And he's coming from Boston, so I said, and I looked at your agenda and I said we were last on the agenda, it's going to be a very long day and night for him, so I suggested...
Better off not driving this week anyway, he's better off the end of August.
I didn't realize we were going to get into so much detail, so my apologies. I gave him a pass, but he's...
We didn't expect that we would have time.
Yeah.
Time, right. Three cases that we expected to have hearings for. So the intent was just for an overview tonight and not to have all the experts necessarily come in and provide.
But I will discuss with him your comments, absolutely. See what he has to say.
And Frank's request, too, don't forget.
And Frank's, yes, I have my list here.
Maybe a little color in that and people will find it more appealing because...
Color, yeah.
Yeah, I defy you to tell a Harvey plank from a, at any distance, use them plenty of times and...
Any suggestions on color?
A plaid, my favorite.
Plaid.
Neon green.
Burberry plaid.
Neon green.
Other than a motion to continue until August 29th, procedurally, anything else we need to...
So, so peer engineering will be based on our engineering department's requirements. So we will get a contract together with them for that.
Do you need a vote for this? Do you need a vote for this?
If you would like, I certainly do that.
Do you have a list or are we just using who we've used?
No, we usually, we have a couple of peer engineers that the town has pre-betted.
Make a motion for...
To authorize the zoning administrator to retain an appropriate peer.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could I, could I, I'm sorry, I think it's important to define the scope because the applicant, if the applicant has to particularly come up with the cost, we don't have any wetlands issues, we don't have any stormwater issues, we don't have any natural resource issues. So if it's just...
Engineering and architectural.
Engineering and architectural, if we define the scope, then we don't have to pay somebody to write paragraphs about how there are no wetland issues.
Parking, engineering, and architectural.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a motion to continue until August 29th, 2024, 6:00 PM.
Second.
This is the end of discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time and your presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it and all the work you do. I know it's hard, but it's...
That includes new hearings this evening, uh, under open meeting. We have minutes, and we will be tabling those minutes.
It's the brand name.
Yeah, it's brand.
Zoning administrator update.
It's a family company, it's huge in Pennsylvania, but it's cementation, it's got the grain in it.
So what is cementation?
It's a cement, yes.
Let's hear all about that balloon test.
Yeah, it's a press, and it's, it's got a mold, so it's got grain in it, and it looks...
June 28th, the applicant is proposing to conduct a balloon test between 9:00 AM and noon at 481 Quaker Road for the prospective future monopole for cellular pre-implications. So the application has been forwarded to Cape Cod Commission, they will review that. But in the meanwhile, the applicant is providing the balloon test for that Cape Cod Commission review. So you're welcome if you're in the mood and in the area to stop by, but I'm sure they will also take photographs.
Anything else?
You do have a upcoming vacancy on the board.
Just going to make an announcement, but all right, go ahead.
So feel, feel free, that's, I think, all I could think of.
So, did under board update, but, um, a board discussion?
Um, where are we on doing something with the clocks or not doing something with the clocks?
I'm happy to do something with a clock. I would ask that someone else have to, have to set up with you the timer. As chair, I got to keep trying to move things along and so on, but I think it's important that, yeah, someone needs to start holding people to two minutes. I was at a board of selectmen's meeting, they're, you know...
Do they have a clock underneath?
I don't know, they have a clock underneath, but they're, they're using, you know, they're starting to enforce two minutes, two minutes is two minutes.
She's been doing it for a while, yeah.
But we'll loan them our clocks to help them out, too, if they, if they need. But I guess, can you go, can you go ahead and purchase them?
Well, I think, yeah, I think what we were trying to figure out is position-wise, because we obviously want to have something where the applicant who's at the podium can see and the board can hopefully see as well. So I guess it's kind of position-wise, where would that be?
What do we need to...
Where you can see front and back, I believe.
Nancy now gives the warnings. She'll say, you have 30 seconds, that's...
They just use...
One needs to go up here, one needs to be down here. Or if it's two-sided, that works.
Or whoever, whoever the timer is going to be, just, just chime in and say, you have 30 seconds.
Right.
Yeah, because I was going to say, here's the other part of the problem is if you have a butter who's up there and if they're reading from something prepared, are they going to be able to read and look up at the time and try and like mitigate that, manage that, right? Because I think you find many people are nervous about appearing before the board anyway, and a lot of people, they, I don't want to speak in public, right? And so I don't think you want to discourage, but you obviously want to limit people from spending the day there, right? So...
The selectmen kind of put shoulders on it, so to speak, you know? They give you a warning and then, you know, people take an extra 15 seconds, but if they get much beyond that, you get a second warning.
And that's up to the chair.
Yeah.
And it's...
Yes. You're empowered to find a timer that you think can work or buy two.
Please.
Yeah, okay.
Red light, green light?
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
Do they have something like that in court where that it changes colors?
Hell of procedure, green is go, yellow is run up, and red means sit down and stop.
So maybe that would be helpful.
Every appellate judge I've appeared to has always reminded the people, the applicants there, the litigants that evening, and they say, so we'll just encourage you to get to the point.
But a timer's nice because you can see it, right? I don't know where I am in the yellow, you know, so I think a timer's good. And I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss the no-stay extension or...
It was going to be under board update, but...
Okay, that's fine, I'll wait.
So having consulted both with special counsel Miss Pucci as well as town council, they are both of the opinion that because we closed 375 Sandwich Road, plain terms of the regulations, we do not have enough units at this point to issue a stay on opening any 40Bs at this point. So a stay provision is not applicable at this time because we closed.
Today.
Correct. At this point.
But conversely, potentially with a 40B, we could open and we could potentially push out that second meeting.
We have, once, once opened, we have 180 days, and I think that the, the, you see, I made it very clear to Attorney Moynihan this evening, I said, you know, we, we're, our schedule's full up. If, if it's getting to the point where I think that we would not have enough time to get to a 40B, that we could ask the applicant or just say, listen, we, we, our schedule is, is really full up at this point and ask for an extension on the timelines. Hopefully, if it's a friendly 40B going forward, that they would grant that. But at this point, we don't have the ability to mandate a stay, it's now just a question of staying within guidelines and then asking for, after to work with us, given that...
But structurally, we don't even necessarily need to ask for an extension. We could open, we have 180 days. We're just not going to see you for 45 more days.
Yeah, it's scheduling, it's just that you run a danger that if, if we push somebody off 90 days and suddenly there's a lot of issues that...
Correct.
We, we end up having to make a decision that, we would, we would have a problem in front of the hack, I would suggest.
Well, shouldn't we have peer reviews from the very beginning, the first day?
Yeah, usually.
And applicants will know that we're 10% too.
True. Yes, that's the other thing.
So when a 40B application comes in, we have the data, should we authorize, Noreen and Ashley, to go get the, to go get the peer reviewers? Well, why, why do we wait?
Why wait?
I believe you have to open and then make a request because it's an account that is funded by the applicant. So the board has to open the hearing, please correct me procedurally if I'm...
Get right to it.
I mean, I suppose we could technically pre-arrange that if the applicant's willing. But I guess the other part of the problem, too, is as you move forward down the road and we come to a circumstance where we're at 10%, is it really fair to ask an applicant to go forward with a peer if for some reason the board's not inclined? I mean, I, I don't know.
I think from a transparency, I'd, I'd say you, we get peer review on any 40B, but that's just my opinion.
But we have issues like we had tonight of the scope.
Yeah.
It could be different in each case.
Yeah.
I think discussing it at the first hearing is probably the most appropriate.
We get our scope from town engineering because they're the specialists, so they know for the particular property what they're looking for. So we could not arrange peer until at least we have that. That being said, you know, as soon as we got that in place, I mean, we could certainly ask applicants ahead and say, look, the board's going to expect this, do you want to set it up? But depending on how much time we have, you could have a peer engineer who's ready, but the, if the board has a short amount of time to hold a hearing, yeah. So it's, it's just going to, it's just tricky based on your workload right now.
Well, generally, when applicants come in, too, they will go to engineering and review, you know, lightly their project. So engineering can kind of get a grip on it before it's even opened anyway.
So the thing I'm hearing is that legally, we have to open because they're paying for it, we have to ask them. But now I'm hearing that maybe we make an arrangement with them before, I don't...
We have the, we have the right and the ability to ask them to fund for a peer review.
And be prepared, that's all.
I think, I think that the other thing about looking at the scope of what's coming in down the road, I think a lot of these going forward are going to be friendly 40Bs that are...
For lack of a better word.
No, but, yeah, no, no, it's where they're coming through us from one of our subsidized housing organizations, or they're coming to us with a proposal that is not as controversial as previous applications may have been. In addition, a lot of them, I think, are going to be coming through as LIPS, the local initiatives, and that they're going to the board of selectmen first or other, other town boards looking for approval or endorsement of the project. And I think that at that point, Noreen is going to be able to get a sense of what the scope is and is going to be able to suggest, plus you're attending, Landy, a lot of these meetings behind the scenes, I think that, you know, you, I think we'd be able to alert the chair, this is going to be small in scope or this is not going to be. And then we could then kind of vet this out pursuant to public open meeting law, of course, but I think you're going to have a sense of whether or not this is something that's going to require a peer or not, and should be working with the chair at that point.
Yeah, I would anticipate basically because our engineering department is so overloaded, they just don't have the time to devote to this. So our arrangement is that they look at the general issues and identify those for me, and then I'm able to go to a peer engineer and say, okay, here's the basic scope that our engineering department has identified for you. So then they're able to put together a contract based on what the expectations are. So we certainly can work with prospective applicants on that and try to set that up in advance.
I think it's just by building a consensus, it's the board's preference, you always have peer review.
It takes some time.
I think, yes. If there's an exception, I think we can take it up case by case, but otherwise I'd have...
It's all going to be different.
Yeah, it's just the scheduling component of it, you know, I mean, quite honestly, the board's meeting every week and which, that's what we signed up to, I guess, to some degree. But again, if there's a way we can stretch these out, but make sure we get the peers in, get the reviews done so that the meetings are more productive. I think that helps. We don't want to be waiting for the peers and calling on another, in my humble opinion.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Yeah. And you're going to make that known anyway. That's our preference.
Because this, you know, it's certainly not a problem to work with applicants when they are filing because they're, they're going to know that this is coming up. But the other part, too, is that we had actually one 40B that was filed that has not done the whole stormwater drainage report. And so while you can retain a peer, the peer has a whole piece that's missing because they're going to need that information. So...
Every case is different.
We want that, too.
Coming here with, I'm prepared.
Final board update, unless someone has another, is, and it's probably more for the benefit of our TV audience or those in the audience this evening, there is a board vacancy that will be coming up as an associate member. If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board of appeals, I would just encourage you to look at the town committee vacancies, fill out the paperwork in the board of selectmen, and you could certainly call the zoning administrator and ask questions about what the job might entail. Uh, future agenda, oh, one other board update and future agenda items, any other board updates? Future agenda items, we will have board reorganization in July for our organizational procedures. I think we're going to do that the last meeting of July.
Okay.
Which will let us get through the, hopefully with Saxon and a few other hearings, so that will occur tentatively the last meeting of July.
I thought terms ended June 30th.
Rules say that the...
I think we only have to do it once a year.
Once a year. July, so.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I'm with you.
I'll give that to Mark in a second. Next meeting will be July 11, 2024, 6:00 PM at the selectmen's meeting room. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.